Welcome to this special meeting of the East Lampeter Sewer Authority to discuss this possible extension of the Strasburg Pike sewer lines. We're gonna have our engineer Matt Cici give you an explanation of exactly what what possible ramifications could be.
Thank you, Rick. Thanks everyone for coming out. Just a couple housekeeping items. There is a sign in sheet in the back if you really want to sign it in. Thanks for that purpose. So we have a record of who's here. I guess if anyone's online, but I think.
There is no one online.
Okay, alright. And then we also have a couple exhibits throughout in case anyone wants to take a look at things. But just for some background information, and the the gentleman that are up here are four out of five members that are on the East Lampeter Sewer Authority. They're the board members. So they've been appointed by the Board of Supervisors of the Township here for managing basically the sanitary sewer system throughout the township. So that's their responsibility for the overseeing the operation, maintenance, extensions as needed of the sewer system throughout the township. And ultimately, within the township, the township is ultimately responsible for sanitary sewer service, be that through online existing online systems, i.e. septic system, sand mounds, or public sanitary sewer system. So, East Lampeter Sewer Authority Board handles the public sanitary sewer system. So, previously, it came to the sewer authority's board's attention that there were residents out along Strasburg Pike who their existing online system, their sewage septic system had failed. And in working with the Township Sewage Enforcement Officer, there was no means of providing a replacement system. So, they approached the Sewer Authority Board to say, are you looking at any possible sewer extensions or, you know, can you assist here with possible sewer extension? To provide suitable means of sewage disposal. So the Sewer Authority asked the Township staff and HRG with looking up to say, you know, is it feasible to provide, you know, is there feasible means of providing a sanitary sewer extension? So we basically just completed a conceptual design, you know, we went out, took a look at just existing information, topography. Sanitary sewer service does, there's a sanitary sewer main that it does extend out. It was installed with the bridge project, bridges upgraded, but it does come out to roughly 400 feet along Strasburg Pike. And turbines currently at this location here. So, the, you know, from a sanitary sewer perspective, the ideally want to take advantage of gravity. So we looked at the topography of the area, you know, is there a the ability to extend gravity sewer up that hill, you know, that does appear to be that, you know, we can extend gravity sewer up to the high point of the hill along the Strasburg Pike. And then beyond the high point, we can't get the water uphill unless we pump it. So there are, there is a means of individual pumps on properties with lift that water and pump it up to the high point of the gravity sewer system on the far side of the hill as you head south on Strasburg Pike along a stream crossing. So, conceptually, you know, we worked with the Sewer Authority to come up with a plan to say, yes, you know, there is a feasible means of providing sewer service along Strasburg Pike through a main extension. And the Sewer Authority Board then said, okay, well, before we do anything, we want to contact the residents, invite them here to a meeting to see if anyone else is having issues along the section of the Str- along this area of Strasburg Pike. You know, get some feedback because it is something they're evaluating. You know, there is cost associated with the extension of the sanitary sewer system here for this. And it's not just authority costs to extend mains, but then there's also a cost here for the residents for installation of piping on your property hooked up. And in addition to that, you know, quarterly sewer fees and tapping fees to tie into the system. So, that's initial high level estimate of you know, work that's been done thus far, just to see if it is feasible. Because again, the Sewer Authority is tasked with looking at providing a sanitary sewer system or providing sanitary sewer service to basically protect, you know, make sure that, you know, residents have means of connection and protecting the environment with the Mill Creek that's there. We don't want sewage going into the street from that aspect either. Hutch, do you want to add anything else here?
I'm Ralph Fitzpatrick, I'm the Township Manager. I'd like to say my thanks for coming this evening. As I said, or as was said in the letter that went out from the Authority, and everybody else has local water that they're getting from it. So, any, anything that could contaminate the groundwater that would affect wells could potentially have health impact on everybody out there. So that's another reason to consider having a sanitary sewer system that serves the properties out there. As Matt said, you know, they've done a preliminary design. I think you estimated a total cost for installation?
Total cost for installation is, you know, 1.5 or 1.7 million dollars for the installation here of the of the system with what we're looking at. And East Lampeter Township does have a mandatory sewer connection ordinance. Generally, what that ordinance says is if sanitary sewer service becomes available in front of your property and your structure, primary structure is within 150 feet of that, you're required to connect to that system within a certain time period. If your structure, primary structure is outside of that distance, then it's an optional connection to the system. If this project was to happen and sewer service was, sewer main wasn't intended to be extended along Strasburg Pike or within that 150-foot area, the township ordinance would require a connection to that sewer, that sewer main.
Yeah, I think the other piece of information that I want you to be aware of would be the roughly climbing of, you know, what this project would look like in terms of time if it does go forward. So there's still a lot of design work that would have to happen, engineering work to prepare plans to build the system. Strasburg Pike is a state highway, so it'd have to be permits obtained from PennDOT to operate in their right way and build the system. So, that process of design and permitting for a project could perceive is gonna take, what would you guess, Matt? 18 months?
Here, probably 12 to 18 months.
Again, that period in time would pass before we get to the point where then the Authority would be bidding a project to get a contractor out there to do the work on this time element involved in that as well. And then, I'm sure you probably haven't even estimated the length of time to construct at this point.
It's probably anywhere from six months to a year, yeah.
A year. So we could be, you know, two and a half years before we'd be at a point where we'd be asking those who are required to connect, to connect. So that's, that's a rough estimate of that timeframe at this point.
Yeah, the Authority recognizes, you know, there's opportunity for funding from their standpoint for this project. So, they're vindicated that there's going after grant funding to help cover their portion of the costs associated with this through county ARPA funds. I'll be submitting an application for that, for that process as well to see if there are any funds available that can help reduce the cost. The costs themselves, the, in the past on sewer extension projects in the township, there's been a assessment charge for each connection to the system. That hasn't been determined as far as what would be done here with the product. We're still early in the stages here. Generally, how the sewer extension project would work is there's a sanitary sewer main, be it either a gravity line with manholes or an impression line that would be installed in Strasburg Pike. And then there's gonna be a smaller pipe that comes off of that that would extend from that main line back to at least the right of way line on either side of Strasburg Pike, including the roads that are out. And that cost to install those items would be part of the Authority's project of what they would install. And then from that point there, back to the house, that would be a cost, it would be the responsibility of homeowners and working with plumbers there for installation of that. The the, there are, you know, different funding options, different funding programs available from PennBest that can help with the cost of individual homeowners, their lateral extension from that point back to the home. Yeah, if this project moves forward, we can certainly get information out to see what those programs are and get that to the residents there for that process. For those homes that are on the pressure line and require a grinder pump, what a grinder pump basin is, is a, it's a tank that gets its ball in the ground outside of the home. The tank is three foot diameter and eight feet deep, I believe that's your tank system there. So what you would see from the surface is basically a three foot diameter plastic lid there that would be where the tank sits on the ground. And then within that, it has a pump. And that pump is designed to reduce any solids and anything that comes down your sewer system in the pump itself and pump that into the sewer system for that purpose. So, the township, they maintain the residential grinder pumps. So if there was a problem with that pump that goes down, you guys maintain grinder pumps up to, I think, three connections for residential or four or more. So, you have a multi residential unit running with four you, four connections or four users or less, four units, I guess. Township maintains those. So if there was a problem or that pump failed, you would contact Township and come out to address that pump. For those residents with the pump though, there is a cost electricity to power that pump as well. That would need to be tied into your power system to account for, I guess.
I guess, you know, the Authority's looking for feedback and questions that we can try to answer at this point. Only answer at this point, but the one, one point of feedback that I guess I think would be helpful, the looking at this going forward would be to know if anybody does have sanitary sewer service needs in a, in a basement because of the level of service that would go out in the road, you know, might not be low enough to serve a basement facility. So, you know, just by showing hands if you don't mind, does anybody have things in the basement that require sanitary?
And then the toilet back there.
Okay, yes. Okay, so most.
So, and what's shown here, the exhibits I see you've taken some, you know, we've just done an approximation at this time, you know, if the project moves forward, you know, we would go through a design element there where we, you know, like to come out to the properties and actually collect the elevations of that information so we can craft a design system to capture those elements to make sure that, you know, we can provide that service to you in those steps.
Right now, the system is designed so that it pumps it from downstairs at that sewer up into the other pipe, which goes out to the septic system. And then it goes through two different, two other tanks before it gets to another pump that just pumps the, the water in.
So what, like in that scenario there, you would probably look at that pipe that's leaving your house, the elevation of that pipe and make sure that we, you know, can pick that pipe up and run it out to the main line.
Yeah, because you would have to, they're in the back of the tub, back and around the side to the front, which is close to one side.
So that's, that's the type of information we'd want to collect right now and say, okay, it makes sense to run that mine on one side of your house or the other. And what are some items, places to avoid?
Because the other thing is the system is fairly new. So that's a lot of expense putting that whole system in there. And now, they're, if we're forced to connect to this, then that's additional expense that we're going through. And a lot of us are on just social security and stuff. And that's basically the only income we gotta contribute.
I understand. I think that's where, as I mentioned, there are some other programs that I think PennBest has, PennBest is a state agency, and they have some programs that are available to help individual homeowners provide to meet their criteria for those situations. Of the septic system. It was important to us a few months ago.
It's January, February. So you had meetings and what are we finding out now? And it's incredibly frustrating. Could have rebound your house for 13 years, never had a problem. And now wherever you put this, where, was it called the extension, whatever, we might be forced to, we've never had an issue with our septic. So I think it's unfair. You're punishing us for someone else's failure. Give us the choice if you're gonna put this by our house. Like you said, fixed income, daycare, mortgage, everything like that. Some of these residents can't afford it. Even if you offer help, you might make too much money. Do you know what I mean? So give us the choice. We live here. Take the money, put it somewhere where it's needed. Clean up Walmart, clean up the creek behind our house. Why do something that doesn't be done for everybody?
And if, if there's funds available, but needed for sewer, what was it the homeowner that needed the facilities told about the funds? And said, we want to break to this, you know, sorry, digging time so to speak, so two jobs. Because my wife has, so send up the, shots, maybe nick you bills. We had $2,000 in daycare expenses. Worked 1469. Health care's up. My kids have, I can't announce allergies that react to air reasons. So we just upgraded the PC system and shouldn't spend the rest of our savings, which was $11,000. So we could have an aeroscope put in. Because instead of framing, which means I have no installation of all of what's going. The only installation in my, is the stuff that I put in the ad. The funny part about this whole process is as we were doing it, we found the original builder's contact information, the contact, it's not finding out why the installation, but and other things. Previous owner maintained this septic system. Every year he put in the anxiety. He had suction out every three, four. He'd do it every two. We put the anxiety in every month, about 14th of every. I understand that, you know, sometimes people can say, you know, believe me, I got $400 checking account. That's what I typically carry every month. So my paycheck is out the door. You know, ever since, and I'm not trying to be political or anything like that, but ever since Biden administration, Biden administration checked the fuel costs, we're struggling to make ends meet too. And again, if, if this homeowner needed help, why wasn't they were made aware of funds? You know, and I'm not trying to diss anybody, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, okay? If, if you want sewer, hey, that's, that's on you. I don't want to be part of a system that contaminates the waterways because it's combined service operation, which is heavy weight explosion on several creeks.
Enough for East Lampeter, ours is completely separated.
So, it's a big circle.
Our sanitary is just in a sanitary system. The city of Lancaster does have a combined system. We do not.
Okay, so what if it's closed?
In the city system?
No.
If we have a flow, it's out of man, so we go out and treat it.
So if that happens, ground, it was in the gavel.
Yeah, we have to report that to the AP and we have responsibilities for that. That's supposed to be a very rare event. It is.
So that being said, so that being said, like Texas, Miami, who's responsible then?
Well, it depends on the circumstance involved. So let's say about a lot of connection, main line connection.
Who's responsible for that? Because I've seen multiple stories, except that's four hours. All. Four hours. Imagine what you're holding. This is a minor, you know, assume a lot, two hundred societies did that, having two young kids, sleeping two hours, and working double overtime and second job. So once again, trying to be rude, disrespecting, stand in my ground because the system is working perfect. That's right now. And if it fails whatsoever, we'll get it repaired immediately, regardless of the cost. Because I respect my neighbors. I want their water contaminated, you know, I test my Regardless of the cost, because I respect my neighbors, I want their water contaminated, you know, I test my water. By the soft test and you know what? It's as clean as a day as we want.
Understands you, you're opposed to having to be forced to connect to sanitary.
Can land on that map. That's to be determined. To know if we're a hundred fifty feet from that.
The it's generally for this system, it would be from the right of way line. So. Yeah, this map here doesn't show the right of way line. We haven't gotten to that point in the design effort because it's just a study, but it's generally, if you take a look. Where the telephone pole is, that's a pretty close, or the power poles, it's a pretty close approximation. Yeah, we're we're within a hundred fifty feet and and we have a hundred, you know, probably a hundred year old trees on the property. I think when I get into my house, thinking about my driveway. You know, it's not going through the the playroom that I just installed in the basement.
I could say so, I'm going to be clear to you. I mean, we've made no decisions yet. That's why we. I guarantee we haven't. You know, that's why we called the meeting, wanted to put like your folks and everybody else in here. Um. We uh came to us months ago that the one. One property up uh.
And I'd be willing. To give some sort of donation to the somewhere that needs septic service.
Look, and and I'll let maybe Charlie or Matt talk to this, but when I picked up at the meeting, their. Their system's failing and there's no other option for a system on their property just because of it not perking correctly.
From what we were told, they their only solution at this point is they hold intake.
But we we made no no decisions at all. We want input from here and we're gonna take it from here to see what.
So so if you run the system, obviously you get the letter said we're. I've been doing a hookup, we're paying for it regardless. Right?
Assessment, yeah.
The assessment part, if if there's a front foot assessment, then yes, everybody pays the front foot assessment.
Okay, so. Obviously, I want to see if it has some. I have pictures here that are stuff that I retrieved, such as. I pulled four fifty-five, got them down, three patio chairs, a basketball, a waste can, a trash can. And on paper, he's like, hey, so they can get the services they need to get. Uh but. That should be my choice. I should not be banned.
I've got a couple of questions. Um first off, can I surmise that any home that's marked with a grinder pump? Or a gravity system notation is within the hundred and fifty feet of the right way? Must have to be up there.
Generally, um there may be one or two that I think. This lot back here, when we went back and evaluated, that was outside it, I think, but generally every other one, that's correct.
Okay.
And the G, the gravity, that was just our initial first. Uh review at it, you know, as we. Uh if we were to go further in design, we would further refine that to determine if it can be a gravity connection or or not, or best be driven.
Well, then my second question would be um. Based on, I can see where the uh line stops for where you have a service term light. We've lived in our house since uh two thousand and we were here when the bridge was replaced and at that time. You had considered uh taking part of our property for eminent domain in order to put uh. Alleviate doing redoing the bridge and going around the back. That got tabled and you redid the bridge and apparently redid this uh sewer and is it public water as well? That came through with this sewer line up to that first double wide. Do you know that?
No, there is no public water there.
There's no public water, but the old mill shop and the people that owned it and their barn. And the first double wide all have these lampeter sewer at this point? Is that correct if I'm seeing this?
Yes.
Okay. No. And and my question to you is, we had looked at you with those two double wides as a potential for pay round. Investment and realized at that time that both of those double wides were on a single septic system. And I see now one of them is, one of them isn't. My question to everyone that was making the decisions at that time. What predicated your decision to stop the sewer going through at that juncture? And I consider us the land that time forgot. Because not only do we not have public water, we don't have public sewer, we maintain our own systems. We don't have natural gas. We have folks on either side of us at Wendy Hill. And the old mill shop, excuse me, old mill states, they all are those. And so at this point, I had one time checked to see if we could get natural gas. And they told us we, they had no intention of coming through with natural gas. If I wanted it, it would be a hundred fifteen thousand dollars for us to have it to our home. So I I guess my confusion lies in who's making these decisions? How they decide who is and who isn't and. Uh today's point, why are we talking about doing this when up until now it's been okay? But we haven't had any of that, and we do. I'm with him about supporting whoever's having problems. I'm also with him, but I would just ask for the judgment to be all encompassing. And at the time they put the bridge, fixed the bridge and put the sewer through to that point, we weren't talked to at that point at all. So I would ask why?
Sure. Uh the limit of PennDOT's construction project related to the bridge stopped at that point. So we were able to partner with PennDOT's construction project to build that far.
Okay. And at that point, you didn't even consider the idea that you might at some point have to. Include the rest of the land that time forgot with uh.
That's that's why it was extended to that point for consideration of the future.
Okay.
Uh I have another question. If if you're standing there, have you reached right up to that one corner there? You see the house that has like the little extra square driveway off of it?
This here?
Right there, yes. Okay, in front of that is my house. Not that one, the other, that's my home now. Okay, where that little square driveway is, right? Right there, that's the house over here on this. Which used to be my brother's, he sold.
No.
In the back. Yeah, the one over there. Now, the property that lies beyond that. Little square cutout for a driveway, back to the creek, I also own that. It's uh about one point nine acres. Now, they come through with a sewer line to my home. Will they be able to continue back to do it through the property in the back? Because it's way further than one fifty.
So for this property here, if this project was to come through. Under township regulations, they would not be required to connect. Uh calling what they ordered for. Right earlier, they said they may still drop a line to lateral connection to the right of way. That if they so choose to connect now, or they have a problem in the future, it's there for them to connect to.
Okay, so in other words, if they had to do my house. Uh and we come back along that driveway?
Uh this line here is just the concept line, depending upon where your system is, how it comes out.
Sure. The end of it, there was like a carport or. And you're there.
So you can take a look at each property and then make a determiner. Try to determine the best route from where your system, where your pipe leaves your house to get out towards the road. So this this is more just a. It's again, it's a concept, you know, this line can be located anywhere along your property, frontage, that makes the best. Better connection.
Not one of these septic failed. Not one of these houses have a failed septic. So wherever failed is either more that way. So why have us right here who didn't fail? It's not this stretch, I can tell you that.
That's where the sewer is. That's where the connection point is in the sewer system. You can't, you have to have a flow going. But we don't know if it failed. We we know of at least one and there may be others. Um but we don't know. So in order to connect into the existing system from the flow to get there, you have to start it.
So you're not gonna join with Wesley and Peter at the top of the hill at the stoplight? They have public water or public sewer up there, don't they?
Not until you get substantially under down Strasburg Pike, not at the Columbia there, Wendy Hill and.
Uh that development have public sewer? That goes off of Wendy Hill Road, right there, that big development, that all that house.
Yes, probably. Yes.
Yeah, there's probably public sewer back there in that development, but that's a different system that wouldn't be part of this. Yes, ma'am.
I just have a question. Why one hundred fifty feet?
Um. I don't know that I have a good answer for that. Uh this uh this has adopted many years ago as the uh.
Like, I think we need to be looking at every piece of that. When you think of the houses that are four hundred fifty feet, the road. There's rich people in general, right? They're the ones that have the money and they're the ones that's closer to the mill creek. If their house is one hundred fifty feet off. So I think that should be looked at too. Why the one hundred fifty feet you need to think about. Um but the places that are closer are not as complete. A lot of these are middle to low income families. Yeah. So that's all. I'm curious. And so we're in a solution. Like, we, so it came from late, but it sounds like there's a property that's failing which can't fix.
There's at least one that we know of.
He said that probably currently has a holding tank, so.
He or she's able to wait two or three years for connections.
They, so their current method of disposal is they have a that. And then it goes out of their pipe out of their house, goes into that tank and there's a level sensor in there that when it fills up. And they get an alarm and they have a company that comes in and pumps it out.
Does the sensor fail or is the holding tank failing?
The holding tank is the temporary solution drain field, so.
The drain field fail.
They cannot.
Because um or because there's no.
There's no regulations for that required, requirements for a drain field. They have to have certain. Um soil conditions, slope issues. So the, they went out to, I guess, investigate and they said there's no room here to put a replacement sewer system in. Permanent solution is a holding tank system.
And a holding tank, safe.
Holding tanks are safe, but they're not a permanent long-term solution. So DEP, it's a temporary solution. Anything else, a permanent solution can be put in. So they're in essence, a water tank vessel. So the water just runs from house to store to there until a company comes in and pumps that tank.
We need to get our tank or I think. We talked about abilities, because this one seems extremely, I mean, we put in new houses that have a septic system. Um everywhere along the mill creek. And maybe they need to be monitored more carefully. Maybe that's something that um the township should look at. Maybe every three years when we're pumping out our tanks, we have to give a report that our tank is safe. Or you know what I mean? Like, are there other options and how we look into them?
What was reported to us is that they looked at other options and there are none other than. Requesting a connection to public sewer is what's been reported to.
But you don't know what that there are, things for disaster.
All I understand is that was items are evaluated with the township sewage enforcement officer. Um so. I think they would have investigated to see if there's other solutions there. Um. Besides a holding tank, because a holding tank can become very expensive to pump out, you know, if you're doing that every couple of weeks.
Sure. And what is a related part of a septic system? And it's rain fields. How far did that have to be from?
I don't have that answer here with me.
There was a two hundred foot conservation right where there couldn't be anything built. Along the stream. Couldn't come back to that two hundred foot mark, okay? And um it seems to me that right over there by. Uh that that's right on the creek, but there are some houses over there. How they get permits for them to be within two hundred feet on a new development? Within two hundred feet of that creek.
It's in West Pimpeter Township, so we have a concern for that. It's a different township.
Yeah, it's serious. They said this. Septic system. Double wide, if they have to be two hundred feet from the creek for their septic to not be. How would they ever get a hundred feet between their well and their septic system? But yet that kind of.
I don't have an answer to that. Um.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, um so I'm not really familiar with this map completely, but. If this from the bridge, does that go from that one building all the way to the light?
So this this would extend. Um the connection point would be at this location here and then we would extend south along Strasburg Pike. So it's a continuation here and then here's the intersection with Wendy Hill.
So if the person isn't in this area that had the failure. Isn't it possible that they could connect to the one that's already operational? Would it be easier for them to connect there?
So for East Lampeter Township, our point of connection is at that location there. Um. The other, the other development that's down here, that's not in the East Lampeter. We don't have rights to access that system.
And, you know, quite honestly, it's up to the whole. Um so terms of actual getting this service there, you can't do gravity that way, so.
But it is along, the one that failed is along there.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so uh Clay Everly is my wife, Emily. Uh we live at one sixty-nine Strasburg Pike. Uh first of all, thank you guys for having this meeting. Just appreciate, you know, being where we heard and you guys have a hard job, so thank you for what you guys are doing. Um we had a really unique situation, so I'm not sure if we're like against or for this. And my wife can definitely pop in here on the business thing, but we are remodeling our house and uh putting an addition on. And our current septic system is okay, or put the new in, it got perked and they're really installing it in two weeks. Um so, you know, it's twenty grand we're about to dive into. And it just kind of freaks us out, like, okay, this new system in and then two and a half years. Uh hooked up to the sewer.
So if we know this is gonna happen, we kind of would like to know.
Yeah, cause like we just don't want to know what our best solution is. Maybe I'm asking for a suggestion, like. You know, thankfully our our house perked and we can put a new system in, but like in two and a half years, it's gonna stay to like just let that tank sit in the ground. And we have to, you know, jump into a new one. So like, is a holding tank our future for the next three years? Again, like we're just in a tough spot, like we would hook up if we if we could, but we're.
We'll do more frequent pumps. It's not.
Oh yeah, my statue's just, yeah, it's still good. And two more boxes and like by code, if we can't, we can use that current system. So it's like, can we have a disaster. We have the exceptional those to use that current system until the sewer comes through. Do we just go with the septic for two and a half years and?
Use the cost?
Cost. Do we do a holding tank for a couple of years? So we're just in a really unique situation. So that's a suggestion for help. So.
Yeah, you've got all the circumstances that I will begin. Advice to, I'll create a diversity of information as to what the authorities looking at and they're. And advice to, I'll create and receive information as to what the authority is looking at and they're. And as, as, uh, Mr. Stumpf said, authority has made decisions at this point to do this project. So we don't know. Three years, ten years.
Is everything racked from like, put that on Wendy Hill's dam, or?
No, not all.
Uh, you're starting hill, generally, sorry, Wendy Hill. Um, it's a cross here, so you're going downhill. Back, um. Until you get to the top of the year, this stretch. That, that stretch there would be a low pressure line, so all of those homes along this stretch here is having a. And then from the hilltop down. If there was a house. That sat. Lower than the new gravity system. Then that house there.
I think the next question is would the authority? Wave the. And, you know, obviously we still pay share. Are the costs?
I think that's a question that. Not the punt. The authority has to follow the township ordinance. I think ultimately the township supervisors would have to make that decision.
So how would you get that to township supervisors, see we even? All the sewer. I just don't want anything to do with it. That was the third selling point of our. Location, ease of access, because I were much over. And well, sent it. And we bought our house when it's not in Stan.
So I think.
It's, we can, we can certainly, uh, convey the message, you're always welcome to come to a board supervisor's meeting. Express your concern about that, so. Um, if the authority decides to go forward with the project. We'll, we'll share that information and give you the opportunity to address it.
My somebody's got something. What? Something happens, must have been, I'm glad you said, I was thinking about that. You know, definitely want to help someone. But he has to drink water, you know, it's. No. It, it's a dignity issue, but it's, it's concerning, no. You know, not being a U block zero, sad degree of sewage, this and that. Uh. And like, uh, I'm more. That's it. They're, you know, not. You know, and I'm very sensitive, you know. They're not very new septic, I mean, septic's a good brand, thirty to fifty years. Long you probably maintain. I mean, I, there was just a break in these.
Yeah.
That was every man, so there's a lot of stuff that are around there. Sewers and water rates, something. And guarantee that it just won't work. You know, it's like, you know, guarantee myself, sure, for, but. If we lose power, just plug something in, I'll have power in this. And, you know, then I have access to the, to the sewage I access. You know, your refrigerator, is it something? What's our cost if we have to hook up? The home, or what's, what do you guys do, the average cost of that?
Well, no, that's the, uh, an engine fee is, is down to six hundred fifty dollars per dwelling unit. Um, yeah, that's.
And we have to pay the house rate. Or maybe we have to pay the local person.
Right, that.
Second question, I have a sand mound then. What happens in sand? Stumpf's gonna get rid of that?
Generally, if the sand mound or a drain field, um. There's no requirement that anything be done with that, it's your septic tank that you have there that is for the sand mound. Generally, that requirement is that will get pumped out. And then that tank would get filled in. So it doesn't.
You don't have any rough estimates about how much is the cost, I mean, cause you've probably done this before to other areas, you know?
Yes, I mean, we've done this elsewhere. But it, it fluctuates so much, I mean, if you're a house that only has to go. Fifteen feet per hookup or something that's hundred and fifty. There's a wide range of cost, um, that. That are there.
Yeah, and we have the, and we can't just. Probably empty down the B, you have to be emptied down the B.
That's three tanks, yeah, yeah. Yes.
Um, so as far as like timeline, this is like the first meeting, I'm assuming that we've had for this, correct? Okay, um, as far as timelines for making a decision, like, are you guys planning to have more meetings? As far as like opening up to the community, like, like tonight, or is this kind of like the one? You're kind of using this as to going in forward and formulating like a date that you guys are all gonna vote on it? Um, just curious, like, what's the timeline with that?
Yeah, I don't know with any of this, it's a timeline, you know, we, we want to talk about it, make everybody's input into consideration. And then. That's where we go from there, but again, no decisions been made, and this is the input we want, obviously some folks. Strongly against it, um, and, uh. But no, no timeline at this point.
And the only thing I could add to that is that, as Matt indicated, the authority tends to make applications for grant funds, our county. So there's a timeline on that, we've got to submit an application by the end of August, and then, you know. When the county would make a decision on funding that project or, or not. Um, probably too long after that, but might be a couple of months. Then they'd have more information on. If they're not, if they got grant funding, it helps with their. But you think that would play into the authorities?
Would this be like the last then, or like, is it just a township meeting or making that decision?
Or we may, yeah, I think this is our, our only meeting we're gonna have with residents. I mean, that's the only thing we had planned, but you can always come to any meeting we have if you want to discuss anything or find out where we're at or anything. Or on Zoom, I mean, you can.
Perfect, sorry, this is my first one, don't want to leave, I don't know if these things work, so, thank you, guys.
The authority meets the second Wednesday, the very, I mean, it's at four o'clock.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Is there any talk of following this up with coming through with water then? Tim?
Uh, not by us, City of Lancaster operates the water system that does exist in, in the ship, so. They would be the ones that would be looking at that. Anybody would be, um.
Just wonder if it's gonna get through on the heels of this particular.
Yeah, um, I have, I have a thing remotely that would indicate that.
I know sometimes. They come through, I saw here, somebody in the town. Mill Creek cleanup.
Yeah.
The creek where that. But. Free, I cleaned it myself. You know, and. I don't know kind of people. That were in that creek. I'm bored. Seventy-four years.
Mr. Rector, I kind of compare your head, some of those cleanups. I'd be glad to get your information, we couldn't find access to that side without going through the creek. So I can take your information, we can plan a cleanup. We go for volunteers, uh, we live on the river side, if there's an island out there, we couldn't get access to it.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, because.
All. And all clear.
Well, there's, yeah, there's.
We have a, what it's called is an MS floor. And with volunteers and doing cleanups like that, it gets credits, uh, to clean up the streams and clean up the bay, so.
You know. Kind of, on shoes. And it's been going around here, I'm sure. But it's been many years. David, the nursery right. Comes right into the constant river. At all ends and, uh. The, uh. The bay.
Brings the design to do that because of all the leaves, the bushes aren't growing up, you can see all the dragon. So, I'll get your information on the later ticket.
You deal with Strasburg Pike, our neighbors, we all take care of each other, whether it's money, you need food, sleep for your kids. Uh, if we're all kind of on the same stance where we don't want this, if. We don't have to. I mean, here, he's the vice neighbor, he just have issue with, he's not, you know. He's done literally twenty plus thousand in his septic. He's private, he's on the face of common, his life is also, I hope he's over it. Like, we don't want anything, something that we can't afford.
Can I just ask everybody here, is everyone that's here, does anyone have a problem with their current system, is everything working? And can you just put your hands up to say, who says that, is everybody's system working? Okay, so pretty much everyone in here is saying that your system is working.
I mean, I want you to think that he calls an issue because it's, I didn't make kind of like a pipe. There's like, and then he's scared. You know, like.
Well, if mine do fail, I would like the whole another meet in for all of these people or go, you know, okay. Repair it. Exactly.
So, is here, is against this homeowner?
No.
I think a lot of, if someone actually fail.
Yeah.
Uh, right now, especially on order of possession. Like I.
See, those increases in everything.
Six hours, six months, a job, twenty-four hours a week. It's killing our savings dramatically. Eighteen air conditioning shut. Cause our, oh, they wouldn't fill with free honey. Like I said, we're all working up in this, this family out, this, this neighbor. I, I just don't want to catch the bill, I, I have the reliability of the system. I know that people will say that sewer's reliable, but there's just too much news on sewer systems in the laws. And, you know, like. Pretty sure the same, just the. Little stretch of community we have here. I mean, we've been forgotten for how many years until this happened?
And one failed system since we lived here for thirteen. And now it's causing this. What did that tell you?
Other comments, what you want to make? Other questions you wanted?
This is for, um, when you guys do probably make a decision, we get like another letter in the mail? The decision.
Yes.
And again, it's just a ballpark of conference, I think you would know that once probably. I would say we would talk pretty heavily about it in our next meeting, which is the second Wednesday in August, which is.
I think it's August ninth, I think.
So that's when you're gonna make your decision?
No, sir. Sir, that's what we've been talking.
Discuss a lot more, I mean.
Yeah, there were two grant. Process that they are gonna apply, well, we would. I'm sure we're, we're not gonna have an answer on grant funding.
I think it was important for you to come in today and, uh, share your thoughts and your feelings with us, so that helps us. To take that input into our decision-making process, we appreciate your time today to come out, share that with us. Thank you, and you guys.
There are prints around, if anybody wants to look at any more specifics, um.